Everybody ready? Here we go. Well, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the City Council Meeting for the City of Edina. It is Tuesday, February 21st, 2023. It is 7:03 PM. For those folks in the audience and at home, you know that throughout the pandemic and up to the present time, we are doing our meetings in a hybrid fashion. And so if you're watching the meeting on cable TV or at edinamn.gov live meetings or on facebook.com/edinamn/edinamn, you can call in. There's a couple of different opportunities tonight. One during community comment. You can call in on a matter that is not on the agenda or scheduled for a future public hearing, and you can visit with the council about those issues or that issue. And then with respect to public hearings, we've got some public hearings this evening. You could call in during public hearings as well. There's a number that's going to be used for both community comment and public hearings. And so feel free to call in and follow the prompts and then press star one to speak to the operator. The operator will bring you into Director Bennerott. Remember that if you're listening in, you're going to have three minutes, and we'll caution you when you're hitting about the 30-second mark or have 30 seconds left to wrap up. All right. So having provided that information, let's call the meeting to order. And Deputy Clerk Mills Ford, would you please do the roll call?
Member Agnew?
Here.
Member Jackson?
Here.
Member Pierce?
Here.
Member Rissler?
Here.
Mayor Hovland?
Here. Next is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have a meeting agenda in front of us this evening. I noticed Manager Neil down in community comment, when you get to the community comments, says that the next meeting is a prior meeting that you're going to comment on, I think. See that last sentence? City manager will respond to questions raised during the community comments at the next meeting.
Oh, that would require me to anticipate the future.
It wouldn't.
Okay.
We have a lot of confidence in you, but I'm just not sure.
Thanks. It will be last meeting.
All right. So with that one little minor change on the agenda in the community comment section, changing next to prior, is there any other changes anybody wishes to make to the agenda? Otherwise, they'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as shown with that one little minor change.
So moved.
Second. Got a motion from Councilmember Jackson, second by Councilmember Pierce, who approved the agenda as published with the minor change on the community comment portion of the agenda. Any further discussion? Those in favor of adoption of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Now, we are at community comment. And so let's get that number back up on the screen again and determine whether anybody would like to call in or would be wishing to address the council that came out on a snowy evening to visit with us. If there's anybody in the audience, we'll handle people in the audience first that have concerns. Remember again, it can't be something that's on the agenda this evening or scheduled for a future public hearing, but otherwise, we're welcome to hear your comments and concerns. Yes. Good evening.
Good evening. Janie Weston, 6136 Brookview Avenue. I am wondering, I had heard a year plus ago when I was participating in asking community comments on ARPA funds, how, you know, suggestions for how to spend them. And I had asked at that time, is City Hall going to have their air circulation and HEPA filtration improved? And I was told that that was not an ARPA fund thing, but it was going to be done. So has it been done?
All right. Yeah.
Can you answer that tonight?
I'm not sure that I can. I think that, are we in the process of doing it right now, John?
No, but when COVID started, we created filters to as high as we could do it based on the existing machinery and mechanics that are in the building. So I believe there was this change in filters up one level from what was there previously.
Okay.
But there's some HVAC work going on now, right? Like there's...
There's always maintenance and then we're doing some retrofitting of different stuff. But we can get you a better answer next time, sure.
Okay. Yeah, because I was wondering if air circulation was going to be more thought out in that regard. It'd be nice to not feel like I need to wear my mask. So I'm protecting my 100-year-old dad, so he hasn't gotten COVID, and neither have I, so.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks.
Anyone else in the audience? All right, let's put that call-in number in on the screen again for folks to be able to call in if they so desire. Again, it cannot be a matter that's on the agenda this evening or a matter scheduled for a future public hearing. Otherwise, we welcome your participation. Director Bennerott, do we have anybody in the queue?
I do have some callers, but no one has indicated a desire to speak yet. As a reminder, if you are on the line and would like to speak, please press star, then one on your telephone keypad. That's the asterisk symbol, not the pound symbol, and that will get you in the queue to speak. I'm still not seeing anyone. I think it might be safest to wait a minute before we move on. My clock shows that it's 7:09. I will come back to you at 7:10 or when I have a caller, whichever is first.
All right.
It is now 7:10, and I still don't have anyone indicating a desire to speak at this time, so I think it's okay for you to move forward with the agenda.
All right. Thank you. Let's move on now to our city manager, who will address committee comments that were made at the prior meeting. Manager Neil.
Thank you, Your Honor, and members of council. We had two comments made at the February 7th meeting. The first one was made live, and that was by Sue Nissen. Sue is somebody that we deal with when we talk about the use of salt in our snow and ice removal program. She was here to tell the council that she was pleased that the city now had its revised snow and ice policy, snow and ice removal policy online. She thanked the council for their support of that and also asked the council to encourage staff to include chloride management into our clean water strategy. So we'll talk to Mr. Milner about that. His team is in charge of that. We had one caller, David Frankel. David was calling to ask or express concerns about some comments that he said I made at the January 3rd work session. I went back and reviewed those comments. Anybody can review them. They are on the recording for that meeting, starting at around 15 minutes, ending at about 19 minutes, where we were talking about data practices. And I said there are people that are "bad faith actors," quote unquote, who use that process to slow down city government or use it for political purposes, and that's true. Most people do not. And I did not say that Mr. Frankel is one of them. In fact, I don't believe he is one of them. And that's all the questions we had.
All right. Thank you. Got prompt anything from council members? Those comments? All right. Very good. Let's move on. The next matter is the adoption of the items on the consent agenda in a single motion. Is there anyone on the council that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda? Yes, Member Jackson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to take off item C.
C?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Anyone else? All right. With the exception of item 6C, which deals with Art and Culture Commission Advisory Communication, is there a motion to adopt the balance of the consent agenda with the exception of item 6C?
So moved.
A second.
A motion by Member Jackson, second by Member Agnew to adopt the consent agenda items in a single motion with the exception of item 6C that will take up momentarily. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? And now let's go to 6C and Member Jackson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to highlight how, what a great idea that this micro grants program is. It's really centered around community building, and it's something that we really need post-COVID. We really, it was hard on our community to be in lockdown and go through all the stress. I wanted to highlight that the Arts Commission, Arts and Culture Commission, they found this idea and brought it to us. And I just love that when our commissioners are creative and come forward with a good idea. They did some very thoughtful research, and I'm just really excited to see what the community can bring forward with this program as it moves forward. So a special shout out to Commissioners Amla, Chandler, and Faith. Thank you so much for your hard work. And I also, Rebecca, our Chair Rebecca Sorenton is stepping down from the commission, and I wanted to just give a shout out to her. She has worked so hard to apply her talents and her attention to helping us process the upheavals of the last few years. And she really has brought some creative ways to heal our community, and I wanted to have a special thanks to her and her leadership. So with that, I will move item 6C.
Thank you, Member Jackson. And that is the acceptance of the Art and Culture Commission Advisory Communication. Is there a second to Member Jackson's motion?
Second.
Member Pierce seconds Member Jackson's motion to adopt item 6C. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of 6C, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? And now we are on to the public hearing portion of the agenda, and our Affordable Housing Development Manager Stephanie Hawkinson has the first of three public hearing matters we are dealing with this evening. And annually, we have the opportunity to deploy funds that come to the City of Edina through the Hennepin County Community Development Block Grant Program. And Manager Hawkinson is going to tell us a little bit about that program and then also the ideas on deployment of those funds. Manager Hawkinson.
Hi, thank you. Yes, thanks for that introduction. Every year, we do get an allocation from Hennepin County on how to spend our portion of community development block grants from the federal government. We do not administer these funds. They are administered by the county. Okay, let's see if I can get this to work. There we go. All right. So HUD allows for a wide variety of activities, but they are limited. I mean, there are guardrails on how these funds can be spent. There's a very large guiding book from HUD, so we get some direction also from Hennepin County. But I just wanted to include that in here to say that we can't use it any way we want to use those funds. They're pretty restricted. And then there are also our allocation. There are also determinants of what, the size of our allocation. So I understand, and Hennepin County understands, that the HUD budget for block grant funds is pretty much the same this year as last year. However, our portion, as you'll see in later slides, is being reduced. Portion, reasons for that is overcrowding has shrunk. We had a bump up in block grant allocation because we had a bump up in people that were having more than one family live together, or they're living in a unit that was apartment that may have been too small for their family size, where there are multiple people living in a bedroom. So that has decreased a little bit. Also, our poverty rate has decreased a little bit as well. So we may not feel like it's great that we, our block grant allocation is reduced, but the reasons for it being reduced are actually pretty good. So this is how it's been over time from 2000 to 2023. You can see it's relatively flat, then we had a big dip down, and then we had a big rise, and now it's going down again. So we've been just kind of tracking it over time, and the reasons for those changes are pretty much the ones based on population, poverty rates, overcrowding, there's a variety of variables. So our proposed budget for this year is $146,622. So that's down from last year, as you can see. Of that, 15% really stays with the county. They pool it together with other cities like ours, and applications go directly to the county, and these are more for public services, human service type activities. And then the city council here tonight gets to vote on 85% of our allocation for community development activities. So I'm proposing that of our $24,000, that we have some authority over, that $94,629 goes to homes within reach and $30,000 is with homeowner rehab. That is the county program, the county administered program that is different than the one that we administer. We have given to these type of activities for a long time, in part because our allocation is so small that we can't, the room for being overly creative is somewhat limited, and these are needs in the communities. There are a couple of years that we did not give to the rehab program because they had program income that they were just recycling, but that program income is, has been used, and they have, there is our people on the waiting list. So you've heard me talk about WALT, and we have been supporting WALT through these funds since 2007. $94,000 would help leverage funds from Hennepin County, Metropolitan Council, and Minnesota Housing. It helps shows that Edina supports them, and the funds are used in the city. It's bundled with other sources of funds to help with the acquisition rehabilitation of a home. They work in multiple other communities, and the, one of the reasons how they determine how much money, they ask for more than what we have to give to them, but they get block rent money from all these different cities. And this table just shows where the median housing price or the price according to Minneapolis area realtors, association realtors compares to our neighboring communities. So as you can see, $94,000 will not go very far on its own, but it does leverage other sources. And then the rehabilitation funds, our maximum amount is 30,000, so that would be one loan. But they do have some program income going into the county. The county does all the work. It's an Edina resident that would apply, but they would do the inspection, they would help them with the hiring of the contractor and paying the bills. But the note in the mortgage is in the City of Edina's name. And this loan, unlike ours, is forgiven after 15 years. And so it's a lower income threshold, and it is forgivable. And that is that. So this is something we do every year at this time. And I am seeking, this is a public hearing, but I am seeking a decision be made tonight. Hennepin County needs a resolution by early March, and we just received the information from them. So our turnaround time with the public hearing notice was just short, that it shortened it.
Questions for Manager Hawkinson?
Number Pierce?
I just had a question in the presentation, just to see if you knew this, on slide nine, what the median home prices. You had question marks for three. There we go, Crystal, Brooklyn Park, Eden Prairie, for 2022. I was just curious why the question marks for those three? That's all?
My, you know, I, I should have caught that. My apologies for not catching that. There's some weird thing that when I exchange emails with homes within reach, that they get riddled with question marks. We can't figure it out. So they are just, it's some sort of communication error between our computers.
Okay. So those are the values, then?
Those are the values.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Other questions for Manager Hawkinson? All right. Based on what you would like to see us do in terms of action tonight, I'm going to open this matter up for public testimony. The public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to come forward and testify regarding this The allocation of funds through the Community Development Block Grant Program is recommended by Manager Hawkinson. Feel free to come forward. Seeing no one coming forward, hearing nothing, I'm going to turn now to the virtual audience and ask Director Bennerott, is there anyone that wishes to speak on this matter?
I still have friends online, but no one is indicating a desire to speak. As a reminder, you need to press star one on your telephone keypad. That signals to the operator that you would like to speak. I still don't see anyone. We haven't had a full meeting minute go by yet. Since there is that delay with the broadcast, I'd recommend we wait a minute before moving on. My clock shows that it's 7:23. I'll come back to you when I have a caller or at 7:24, whichever is first.
Very good. Thank you.
As is consistent with the lack of people testifying, we had no views and no comments on Better Together.
All right. Good. Thanks for that additional information.
It is now 7:24, and I still don't have a caller, so I think it is safe for you to move forward.
Very good. Thank you, Director Bennerott. First of all, let me ask council members, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
A second.
Got a motion by Member Jackson, second by Member Agnew to close the public hearing in this matter? Any further discussion? All those in favor of closing the public hearing matter, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? Now, the motion that you would like to see us pass this evening is a motion to approve Resolution 2023-14. It's a two-part motion, approving the proposed application for 2023 urban Hennepin County Community Development Block Grant Funds, the CDBG funds, as they're known, and then authorizing the execution of the sub-grantee agreement. Is that correct?
That is correct, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Manager Hawkinson. Does a council member, one of my colleagues care to make that motion?
So moved.
Member Jackson moves.
Second.
Member Pierce seconds. The motion is stated. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried?
Thank you.
Yeah. Nicely done. It was a really solid recommendation, I thought, on how to allocate these funds. And the next two matters that we have in front of us this evening, they're going to be presented by our Community Development Director, Terry Teague. And the first one involves a matter that we've already approved on a final basis, and this again is a public hearing matter. It involves Resolution 2023-16, potential subdivision at 4404 Valley View Road. And I'll turn now to Director Teague, and then we're going to have a short presentation by the applicant, City Homes.
All right. Yes, thank you, Mayor. Members of the City Council, again, this is a project that you're familiar with. It was approved last summer, so it's in the Valley View-Wooddale area, the intersection of Valley View and Oaklawn. The site is zone PCD1, commercial. Within this zoning district, multifamily, multi-residential housing is a conditionally permitted use. A conditional use permit was granted for this site as part of the Edina Flats project that was approved back in 2017, 2018 timeframe. So this is the project that the council recently approved. It is for two two-unit row houses. There's no change to this proposed plan. The applicant intends to build as was proposed in addition to the conditions that were included in that approval. The request before the city council is simply to create individual lots for each of the units so they could be sold off individually. So the request is both a preliminary and final plat to establish those lots for the approved project. This is a look at the plat. As you can see, four lots, one for each unit. This is showing the townhomes as it's laid out with the proposed lot lines. Within the PCD zoning district, there's no minimum lot size requirements. There is a park dedication required here for the newly created lots. That park dedication fee of $5,000 per unit would be due at the time of, at the time of building permit. We did receive some comments on Better Together with concerns in regard to the zoning of the site. Again, multi-residential use is a conditionally permitted use. If these properties were requested to be used for commercial in the future, they would have to meet all of our development standards, in particular parking. Given the square footage of the existing structures, they wouldn't meet our parking standards. It would have to come, those types of requests would come before the city council for any change in use. Again, the applicant has no desire to do commercial here. It's simply to establish these new lots for the residential purposes. Another concern that was brought up on Better Together is in regards to this existing sidewalk. One of the conditions of approval was that this be redone as a boulevard-style sidewalk. So when they're in for building permit for these, that is when that, they would have to submit a plan consistent with what the engineering department required for that boulevard-style sidewalk. So that change will come. This was reviewed by the Planning Commission at their last meeting. They are recommending approval, but the action that we ask this evening is to close the public hearing at noon on February 27th and then continue action to your next meeting on March 7th. With that, I can answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Director Teague? Member Rissler?
Yes, okay. I understand that if there was going to be a different development that was architecturally for commercial use, it would need to come before the council again. However, we do have situations, if you think about Market Street in France, if you think about 54th and France, we do have houses that are used for commercial use. You get that in Linden Hills, you get that everywhere. By subdividing, we are moving away from the condominium construct, and there really won't be any control about how these buildings are used. Is that true?
There is a homeowners association that would be established as part of this for maintenance of those common areas. Another question that has come up is in regard to the boulevard area here, the right-of-way. This would be maintained by the homeowners association. Those types of maintenance, it always goes to the adjacent property owner. But to, like as the example of the 50th and France, the house there on the corner, the parking standards are a little bit different. At 50th and France, they can rely on the parking ramps for their required parking. Here, it would be different with each of these units, 2,000 to 3,000 square feet in size. They would need to provide the required parking on each individual lot, which they wouldn't be able to do.
However, someone moving into a unit, say, an attorney who wanted to continue just doing business, could hang a shingle outside, you know, and advertise services, or if somebody wanted to do other work like that, they could certainly do that. Is that true?
I don't believe so. We have a home occupation ordinance for our single-family homes, being that these are, with our duplexes as well. I believe we could hold these residential units to make sure that they're in compliance with our home occupation ordinance.
But this is the PCD1 zone. What does our attorney think about this?
Member Rissler, I'd have to look at the home occupation ordinance to determine whether these would be subject to that, but I don't think that they would be subject to broader commercial use. I understand that they're going to be doing a common interest community with a residential homeowners association, so they would have to basically dissolve that residential common interest community and reform it into a commercial common interest community if they wanted to turn it into a business establishment. So that's possible. It could happen. Just... It just doesn't seem highly likely to me. I don't know the answer to the home occupation question. I doubt that it's possible someone could hang out a shingle. I don't know the answer to that. I doubt that a widespread commercial use would be permissible in this situation.
This is considered a corner lot as it stands right now, not being subdivided. True, because it's along Valley View and Oaklawn?
Yes, I would say this is a corner lot. Yes.
Okay. And I believe according to our code, with corner lots, you cannot have driveways off of arterial roads or collector roads, and so we do have that driveway on this corner lot. And with the subdivision, you're creating a new corner lot. And in a sense, that's sort of negating the spirit of that code. I assume, or I tried to do some digging to find out why that ordinance was put in place, and I do believe it has to do with safety. And so, you know, just wondering, is this going to be, you know, a way? I don't think it makes sense at this site, especially because of, you know, the three streets coming together, kids going to the park, all of that. Have we ever done anything like this before in Edina, creating a new corner lot? For, and that ordinance went into, was written, I believe, in 1998. So it appears what happened was the Sinclair Building, you know, was fine when that went up, and then it was just sort of grandfathered in with the Burley Hair Salon, but, you know, it was never even addressed when we had the first idea for the condominium. So I guess I'm wondering, has there ever been a case where this has happened before?
I can't recall a commercial district like this where we've done a conditional use permit, you know, in the PCD1 district. We've done them, as an example, the Southdale 1 Apartments, the Southdale site, that's Zoned PCD3, and they received a conditional use permit for that project, but on this small of a scale, I don't recall.
With driveway concerns? Have we ever subdivided a lot this small? Into four pieces?
Boy, not that I recall. There is some commercial property in the 44th and France district, where I did some measurements to see if we have lots that are smaller in size, and those are smaller than what's proposed here.
Thank you.
Other questions for Director Teague? Yes. Member Agnew, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. What would be the impact if this weren't approved? I assume they're, they can still proceed with building the townhouses and, like, just would there be a different ownership model?
Yeah, so they could still build the structures, they just couldn't be sold individually. There would be one property owner. So they could, they could all four be rental.
So it's ultimately making the determination whether these are owner-occupied or they're single owners for each unit, as opposed to one owner, and then these are rentals?
Correct.
Great. Thank you.
Other questions for Director Teague? All right. So I'm looking at the West Unit Number 1 and West Unit Number 2 of what we approved. Has that shared driveway with access onto Valley View? That's going to exist regardless of whether this property gets subdivided or not, correct?
That's correct.
All right. Thank you. That's all I had for now. Is there, and then we're going to bring forward the applicant, I think, for a brief presentation, and then we'll go to a public hearing. Give us your name and address, please.
Rebecca Remick, 5027 Wooddale Lane, owner of City Homes. Just coming, he basically said it all, but just trying to get approval for the plan that was already approved, and now that we have it on the survey, blueprints, engineering, basically just dividing it through that common wall and plating it with the county.
And your goal is to sell these off individually as individually-owned townhomes?
Yeah, correct. That was the intent when we were presenting it before you last summer.
Other questions for Ms. Remick? Standby, maybe something that comes along that we need your input on, so.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to, I'm going to open this up now as a public hearing matter, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to testify regarding this matter?
You read my comments that I put in regarding this. Right now, this is a PCD1, you know, commercial district condominium, as stated on the Hennepin County Property Info site, but these are residences, and the request is that it be four separate residences, actually two duplexes, but each separately owned. So why is it still staying a PCD1? The Hankerson Avenue Townhomes by Jerry's, or Row Houses, those are true row houses because they don't have space in between them. That's a PUD. You know, that got changed. So this just doesn't make sense to me, that this lot, if a division is granted, that it stay as a PCD1, because this is to be residential. So it doesn't make sense to me. It really doesn't. And if there's going to be, as Kerry Teague stated, an association that the homeowners would be part of, then what's the point of dividing them into the separate lots? I don't, I don't, things just aren't making sense here to me. Also, I have a complaint about where their advertising sign is placed right now. It's a very good distraction as you're coming west on 62nd Street, and you see it right in front of you. It is not on the property. It is well into the street right-of-way by at least 10 feet, and any signage is supposed to be on the property that would be developed, so. And it's not, it can easily be moved. It's just sandbagged into place right now. It needs to be put in a better location that is not a distraction to traffic, because everybody going west on 62nd makes that immediate left turn, and you're looking at traffic this way, that way, that way, and another distraction is not a good thing. So I request that the sign be put in a more appropriate location on that property, not 10 feet outside of it, which is way outside city code. So that's that.
Thank you, Ms. Weston. Anyone else in the audience? All right. Let's see if we've got anybody tuning in virtually that would like to testify regarding this matter.
I still have a caller, but no one indicating a desire to speak. As a reminder, if you'd like to speak, please press star one on your telephone keypad, and I have a caller. Operator, will you please unmute the line of our caller? And operator, please begin by stating your full name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Jim Groats, and I live at 5513 Park Place. I am asking for a vote of no on this project for two reasons. This is not, number one, this is not zoned residential. This is a commercial site. By approving this, you are opening Pandora's Box for others to argue against lot coverage, setback, minimum lot size in the future. I have concerns this could set precedent going forward. Approving this would not be good public policy. Number two, I looked at the survey submitted for this plan and discovered what appears to be a problem. The survey appears to not meet the Minnesota legal requirements to be called a survey. It appears to be merely an interesting piece of paper. How would I know this? My wife and I went through a long, costly boundary dispute with a neighbor a few years ago. The same surveying company had done a survey for a builder for a new home which was accepted by the city, but later was rejected three times by Hennepin County Torrance Court. This survey appears to be in violation of Minnesota Supreme Court law Erickson versus Turnquist. I quote from the law, "This survey is not traceable to any of the monuments or landmarks of the original survey," end of quote. It appears this surveyor has failed to follow the footsteps of the original surveyor who drew the Fairfax plat. Where is the required point of beginning? This is not shown on the survey. The developer should be told to hire a new surveyor who will survey and draw to Minnesota requirements and show how this lot fits in with neighboring properties and how it fits with the stakes the surveyor wants to place. Again, please vote no on this, and note, by accepting this survey, it appears the city could be choosing to not uphold and enforce Minnesota Supreme Court law.
Thank you, Mr. Groats.
This is Lori Groats. Do I need to call back in in order to make a comment?
No, go ahead, Ms. Groats.
It was brought up about the subdivision for these four properties, and my question is, normally when they have townhomes or condominiums, a builder is required to pre-sell a certain percentage of the unit before they can get financing from a bank. So I'm wondering if this developer is asking for the subdivision into four separate lots so that she does not have to pre-sell a certain number of the units before she gets financing? And that would not be to the advantage of the city. Perhaps maybe only one of the lots might be desirable, and she sells one, and then the rest sit unsold. So I think that the developer has already received an awful lot of incentives to build, and, gosh, I'm old enough to remember when Edina didn't need to incentivize developers to build in the city. They thought it was a good enough investment without the handouts. I say no on subdividing into four lots. Doug, on these lots, I think about the largest one is going to be 3,000 square feet. If they're residential, then it should be zoned residential, and they follow the residential rules, but it's not. It's commercial. Well, thank you for taking my comments. Bye.
Thank you, Ms. Groats. Anyone else?
I do not have any other callers at this time.
Director Teague, is there anything that you want to do, address during this session? For instance, a question was raised a couple of times, I think both by Ms. Weston and Mr. Groats, that this survey, this will set a precedent by allowing residential project on commercially-zoned property. I think we were through that discussion when we approved the project in the first place.
We were. Back when we went through the Edina Flats project, when they came in for a sketch plan, we had that discussion. Should this be rezoned to PUD? Should it remain PCD1? My recollection was, we talked about, well, we're doing a lot of PUDs, why can't we just do a, keep the zoning the same, because multi-residential housing is a conditionally permitted use? I can think of other examples. In the 50th and France, the 5,000 France project that, where there are condos above the retail, right on the corner, there's this, the CIC plat that Attorney Kendall had mentioned. Those individual condo units are platted as individual units. A little different than this. This is basically two-dimensional. This is, that's a three-dimensional plat where each unit within that building is platted as its own lot, and the, you know, the common spaces, the hallways through the association. So we have done these, we've allowed housing in planned commercial districts in the past. This one is a little different in that it's a much smaller scale. Also, I could address the signage question. When we received that complaint, I did have a conversation with the applicant. We do believe that the signage does need to be moved, and so they will be making sure that they are on their property and then meet the required setback.
Good. So as part of the original approval process by both the Planning Commission and the City Council level, a determination was made, housing was a conditionally permitted use in a PCD1 district. Is that correct?
That's correct.
The way you just said. Okay. It was my recollection as well. All right. And then what about the survey issue? You have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I don't know the detail of that statute, but it's something that we could certainly follow up on as part of the building permit, when they're in for, the building permit, and have to submit a survey as part of that, part of that process.
All right. Thank you. The testimony of some of our residents prompt any other questions from council members? Councilmember Pierce?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So you covered two of the three that I had. The other one is, I guess, more of an open question. Our process is a long process, right, and there are decision points along the way. And so the one question I have is the reason to subdivide. And so when we started looking at this, the original intent was to have these be separate residences. And so in my mind, I was assuming that we would subdivide these, and so the decisions I was taking was with that thought in mind, knowing that that would have to come back before us. And so I just, if you could confirm that thinking, or maybe give your recollection of the process from a subdivision perspective that led us to this point, that'd be good.
Yes, certainly. So they could have requested the subdivision at the same time that we did the site plan review, and we could have approved it all as one package. That's the more common way to do it, but it's not, it's not the rule. It's not always the way it is done. The project that I referenced before at 50th and France, the 5,000 France condominium project, that project was approved by the City Council prior to me even starting with the city, so I wasn't part of that process, but they did come back later, and so I went, assisted them in getting that condominium plat approved. So that's an example where they did it after it was constructed. Part of the reasoning on why it's done after the fact is when those lot lines are drawn, they have to make sure they line up with the building walls. So sometimes for that reason, they'll wait until after the project has been constructed to come back for the subdivision. So this one is a little different, and the buildings haven't been constructed, and they're still coming back after the fact.
Other questions? That prompt any other questions? Member Risher?
Yeah, when I go back and I look at the documents from 2017, including the Comprehensive Plan Amendment to rezone the properties that were along Kellogg Avenue, 4404 Valley View Road is listed, and the language that is in this document is that it is going to be a condominium development. And at that point, Edina Flats encompassed that chunk of land and then 4404, so it was considered to be this unified development. And when I look at the resolution, in order to allow the Edina Flats to move forward, we get the condominium language as well. And so I feel like we're really shifting gears here. When did we decide that this is no longer going to be a condominium? When did we decide that this is no longer going to be a condominium, but it was going to be individual lots? Because I, and the other thing is, when, if you could show that image that shows the buildable area for this 0.27 acre triangular site, and it was in our packet, but I'm not seeing it here. There was a wonderful slide that you had that showed where people could legally build. If we could take a look at that.
I'm not sure.
Oh, I think it's number 12. Okay. All right. So if we imagine the proposed subdivisions and we just think about those little tiny areas that are actually the legal buildable areas, have we ever subdivided land so that that land had such small legal areas? Don't we normally, when we subdivide land, ensure that a structure can be built on it without having setback variances?
Typically with single family lot subdivisions, we're looking at setback requirements. This, the decision that was made to revise the site plan from that original condo plat, that was when the decision was made by the City Council to allow this. And that's when new variances were granted. There were variances granted with the original condo that was proposed as part of the Edina flats. So that process that they went through last summer replaced that condominium approval as part of Edina flats with this project.
Was there an official act to say that it was not going to be a condominium project? That it was going to be individual, single family homes?
Well, the site plan and variances that were granted highlighted the two row homes.
Right. But I think one could argue that the entire project is predicated on the assumption that it's going to be a condominium organized development, you know, down to all of the plantings that are going to have to be very carefully monitored to make sure that they do grow and they'll be okay, the lawn care, all of that, since it's such a tight, small area, you know? And even down to the trash collection and snow removal. It's going to be very tricky. Where do you pile the snow with a project that has so much coverage? The other thing is, you know, when we talk about, well, if it was going to shift uses so that it could be a commercial use, they would have to have parking. Why don't they have to have, since it's going to be single family owned residential, why don't they have to have the impervious surface requirement that we now have?
Because those requirements are part of, are not part of the PCD zoning district.
Right. No, and it is kind of, it is very frustrating because it's, well, it's zone PCD1, so they don't have to have those impervious surface requirements. So, you know, a residential development can go up there. It doesn't have to meet those standards. Oh, it's not a commercial development, so it doesn't have to have the driveways or the parking. And it can have actually, you know, the driveway between the pedestrian movement and the building. So that standard is eliminated as well. And it almost seems to be that this is allowing a development that has, is able to dodge the requirements and the expectations that we have for both residential and commercial and possibly allowing it to be, you know, to function as both residential and commercial.
I'm not sure if there's a question.
There's no question. It's a comment. I'm sorry. Yeah. Thank you.
Other question? Pardon me?
Is the public hearing still open?
Public hearing is still open. We're going to move, leave the public hearing open. That's the motion. Yeah. So I just wanted to finish the dialogue here. I don't know if Ms. Remick had any comments she wanted to make while she was with us this evening with regard to any of the issues that were raised.
Just in terms of the maintenance of everything, there will be an HOA that will be maintaining all of the plantings, the entire landscaping area that you see on the screen, snow removal, the exterior maintenance of the place will all be within that HOA for all of them to have to abide by.
Thank you. All right. The suggestion from staff is that we, as has been our practice most of the time, to leave the public hearing open for a bit. And so in this matter, Director Teague has asked us to leave the public hearing open until noon on February 27, 2023, then close it and continue the action on this matter to our March 7, 2023 meeting. Is there a motion of that effect?
So moved.
Member Agnew moves. Member Jackson seconds. The motion is stated. Any further discussion? Those in favor of closing the public hearing at noon on February 27, 2023 and continuing the action on this matter involving 4404 Valley View Road to the March 7, 2023 City Council meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carry. All right. Now Director Teague has the next matter as well and it involves some of the work that we're doing over at the former Public Works Site on Eden Avenue. And we've got the applicant with us as well and his architect. Director Teague?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Another site, as mentioned, that you're all familiar with, it's the Public Works Site, was zoned last year to planned unit development, PUD. It's a little over three acre site. This is the approved overall development plan, 86 unit senior co-op that received preliminary site plan review as part of that original, the PUD designation. The restaurant itself was just part of the overall development plan, so didn't receive what they're seeking this evening is that preliminary site plan review. And then the north half is to be the park element. Site is guided in the comprehensive plan for mixed use. They've gone through the sketch plan and then again, that preliminary rezoning of the site. As you can see here, the plans haven't changed a whole lot from sketch plan. The three basic elements have all remained the same. So what this, the request this evening is, again, specifically for the restaurant, they're seeking preliminary site plan review. So it would be a 13,500 square foot restaurant, again, similar in size to the previous approvals with outdoor dining area. One new element is this outdoor bar and pizza oven. That wasn't indicated in the original proposal, but they've refined that outdoor area. They've added some landscaping in the outdoor seating area. Another element that was discussed, but are proposed here is along the north half, north side of the building, would be restrooms that would be available for users of the park. They wouldn't have access from inside the building, be located right on that lot line for users of the park. A few renderings here of the project. Building materials and elevations, again, are all similar from the overall development plan approval. So again, site plan is requested this evening. The plans are all consistent with the overall PUD that's been established for the site in terms of setback, building height, building coverage. And one thing to mention is the parking stalls. As part of that overall development approval, a parking study was done. It was determined that 166 spaces are required for the restaurant. There will be 30 surface parking stalls. And the parking study that was done concluded that the Jerry's parking ramp can provide the necessary parking for what they're short. That parking study indicated that there are 215 open stalls in the Jerry's parking ramp and so that'll more than make up for the lack of parking on the specific site. They'll also be providing a valet service. So customers wouldn't have to park in the ramp and walk over. They could utilize that valet service. Access to the site is available off of Arcadia. There's enough area within, within the end of the site to provide turning radius for emergency vehicles. The landscaping far exceeds our code requirement. Based on the perimeter of the site, 41 are required. The overall site has 85 and they have included that additional landscaping within the outdoor, within the outdoor seating area. One of the conditions of the PUD was that the new building has to meet our sustainability policy. So that is one of the conditions of approval. The applicants have been working with our sustainability manager to ensure compliance there. We did receive two positive comments on Better Together. With that, the staff recommendation this evening is, again, to close the public hearing at noon on Friday, February 20, oop, that should be, yeah, that's a Monday, February 27th and continue action to March 7th. With that, we can stand for questions. The restaurateur, Brent Frederick, is here along with the architect. I'm not sure I saw Jordan. Nope. And Bill Nuenendorf, our Economic Development Manager, who is the project manager for the site. So with that, we can stand for questions.
Thank you, Director Teague. Anybody in the council have questions at this point in time for Director Teague? Member Jackson, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Two questions. One is with the outdoor restrooms or the restrooms for the public, do we need to, at what point do we need to have a legal agreement in order to move forward? That's not a requirement of the site plan at this point. Is that correct?
That's correct. We can work out some of those details. They still need to come back for final approval and we can work out some of those easement arrangements and deal with that.
Okay. So when they come for final approval, that'll all be ironed out?
Yeah. So there'll be the site improvement plan agreement as well and that'll be built in.
Okay. Terrific. Thank you. And then the other one, as I was watching the weather report this afternoon, I thought, where is the snow going to go? And I'm wondering whether those bushes on the north side of the parking lot, sort of in the northeast corner there, if there's room to pile up snow, if we do have a snowmageddon in this lot, so that sidewalk continues to be clear. So is that something that, that would be a part of this plan about snow handling or at what point do we look at that?
Not sure. We've talked about snow storage and where that goes. Perhaps the applicant might have some ideas on how they're going to handle snow.
Perhaps not. But I'm just thinking that maybe the, if we could just sort of not make a decision on those bushes for the event lawn, that that might be a...
In this location here?
Yeah. For a snow emergency, that they could pile up some snow there. But just, you know, if that could be something that we iron out before we make a decision, I'd appreciate that.
A good suggestion.
Yeah. That's all I've got, Mr. Mayor.
Questions for Director Teague from other council members? Yes, Member Risher?
Thank you. And after watching the Planning Commission hearing, my takeaway or covering this, was concern about bike and pedestrian pathways through this area. And my understanding is that the sidewalk will be available for bike riders. And ideally, it would be wonderful, since this is designated as a main bike thoroughfare. And Arcadia gets so busy, you get backups from Starbucks, you get parking along Hilltop, you're going to have, who knows, going into the site that may be redeveloped, even more parking. And then you also get some backup when people are coming to pick up kids at OLG. So a dedicated bike lane, I really think that would be a wonderful idea if that's not going to happen. I think there needs to be clear signage or markings on the sidewalk so that people know when they're walking on the sidewalk that they will be encountering bikers. And then the other concern that I had is with the pedestrian bridge that comes across from the Jerry's parking ramp. There was a wonderful detail in the packet where you could see it coming onto the site. And I'm not sure you've got that in your presentation, but there is a step down from that bridge, so it's not a smooth ramp transition. And also having listened to the applicant, I loved the concern about making it ADA accessible, the restaurant and the pathway through there. And we really need to ensure that the bridge is ADA accessible. So those were just my two main comments. And then finally, if the applicant had somebody here to speak to the wood burning oven, that'd be great. I'd love to hear more about the filtration on that.
And I can comment about the handicap, yeah, the handicap accessible. Manager Nuenendorf has been working with our building official and fire department. We want to ensure that it is handicap accessible from the ramp all the way to the restaurant over the bridge through the park. So that is, yeah, we'll have that ironed out by the time we come back for final.
So the stuff will disappear?
Whatever it takes to make sure it's handicap accessible, yeah.
One of the early renderings, we had a sort of a meandering sidewalk that seemed to accomplish that ADA accessibility issue. I don't know about the grade change, but you could see there was a clear attempt by Confluence to make sure that it was ADA compliant.
Yes, that was the intent behind that.
So they could get all the way down to the restaurant and participate in things at the park as well.
Correct.
Yeah. Good, good comment, Member Risher. Okay. Anybody else from the council? Let's, let's hear from the applicant, give them a little bit of time. Brent Frederick from Jester Concepts and Jordan Brookins from Shade Design, are both here?
She is not here today.
Oh, he's not here?
No, just with the inclement weather, I think she lives a little further away. But I know the project pretty well and I think I can probably answer most of it.
I'd say based on our past experience, you can handle yourself very well on this.
I think so. To the new council members, my name is Brent Frederick. I own Jester Concepts. I do live right here in Edina, 5108 Blake Road, on the very west side of Edina. My kids go to OLG and very much in the community here. So I'm excited to bring this restaurant to, to my fellow neighbors and the community, building this for the people of Edina. I think we'll attract some, some other residents from some other cities as well. But you know, there were some, there were some comments about how big it is and it does seem large at 13,000 square feet. But when I see the amount of spaces just on the main floor dining, it's actually pretty small. And I think where a lot of the square footage is coming is from that top level. It's more of an event center than it is in some overflow. So it's not always going to be occupied. And then there's obviously a lot of prep and a lot of kitchen that takes up a lot of, a lot of space. So we're excited about the park. We're excited about how we designed it to flow into our space. We've allowed a lot of pathways for people to walk from Applewood Point, the senior co-op, through our space into Grandview Yard. And we, we're excited about the design and what it, what it means. We've got kind of a, something for everyone a little bit here. You can come with your family and your kids and have pizza and some other things. You can have an event for a birthday or an anniversary. Then you can come downstairs to, to our little cocktail bar, little den down there, get a pizza by the slice with some friends. So we kind of have something, I think, for everybody. And then I can address your, your comments on the filtration outside. And I've heard that a few times now and we, we would, there's filtration built into our equipment twice, once on the initial capture and then one as it exes the exhaust. So we're planning on getting a hybrid gas slash wood model anyways, just in case if, if the wood does not, if it's bothering too many people, obviously, we don't want to, I'm not here, I don't want to bother the community with it. So if it doesn't work, we'll have a nice option to switch. But there's something about wood fire that really, I think, helps with the flavor of the pizza. So that's what we'd like to go with, to begin with.
Further questions for Mr. Frederick? Just point that, yes?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Member Pierce?
I don't really have a question. But every time I see these renderings and we get to the next phase of approvals for this project, I, I get more and more excited as you kind of drive through the area, go around that roundabout. We're in that area a lot as a family and just envisioning what this can be, given where it started, I don't know, 10 years ago, something like that. So the closer we get to it, the more exciting it is for me. So I think good work and let's, let's keep after.
Thank you.
All right. Other questions or comments from council members? This is... This is a public hearing, stand by, we may have some more questions for you. This is a public hearing matter and I'm gonna open it up now for public testimony. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to approach and testify in this matter? All right, hearing, all right. Ms. Weston, come on up.
Can I repeat my name again? Janie Weston, 6136 Brookview. I haven't particularly paid an awful lot of attention to this project, but I'm really happy to see something is finally going to go in and have a nice park that will be tied with a foot or wheel access over to the Jerry's ramp. Just an observation I have, when the Hilltop, right now, when they are busy, there are cars parked all the way down Arcadia and their parking lot doesn't work well in the winter when there's a lot of snow. I see what will most likely happen realistically is that instead of parking on Arcadia, Hilltop parkers are going to maybe use the parking lot of your development. Hopefully, they will go over and use the Jerry's ramp, but that's a bit further for them to go. So I don't know. I see there being a conflict of, you know, fighting for parking spaces that are close enough to the Hilltop as well as to get your fire baked pizza. I also want to make sure that, like, in the wintertime, if you have someone who needs to be in a wheelchair or use a walker, they are going to prefer to park in the Jerry's ramp because they can freely get in and out of their vehicle without snow being an issue. But getting from that Jerry's ramp over to the restaurant, that is a rather long distance for some people. And the way the snow and ice conditions have been this winter have been a really good illustration of how important it is that, especially on that footbridge, that clearance of that snow and ice be done in an extremely timely and conscientious manner all the time. And I'm thinking, would it even be possible to have heat on the bridge embedded into the concrete so that it could, you know, when you need it, flip the switch and melt everything that's on there if need be? So, yeah.
Okay, very good.
Okay. And slow roads sidewalks is another deal too.
Okay. Well, hopefully, people with the handicap accessibility issues will be able to park in the handicap parking and somebody from Hilltop hasn't parked there.
Yeah, to address your concerns, I mean, and great, you know, great comments, we offer as a company free valet to all of our locations. So this would be our sixth restaurant and it won't be any different. So we're hoping and we'll make sure to over communicate to anyone, especially with a handicap, that they should use the free valet. And that gets you right up to that front door. So love your idea about the heated sidewalk. I brought that up to the city. I think it's genius and I would love to do that. So I'm with you. I think it's a great idea.
That was a good idea, too.
Is there anything else I should comment on?
All right, thank you, Mr. Frederick. Anyone else in the audience wish to testify? All right, let's go to the folks that may be listening in. And Director Benarot, do you have anybody that wants to testify?
I don't have anyone on the call right now and because Ms. Weston testified, we are well past the one minute mark, so I think you can move on if you'd like.
All right, very good. All right, the motion requested by staff in this matter is the same as in the prior matter, and that is to leave it open for public testimony until noon on February 27th. So the motion would be to close the public hearing on February 27, 2023 at noon and continue this matter to the March 7, 2023 city council meeting for resolution. Is there a motion of that effect?
So moved.
Second? Got a motion by a member, Jackson, second by a member, Pierce, to close the public hearing in this matter on February 27, 2023 at noon and continue the action to the March 7, 2023 city council meeting. Any further discussion? Those in favor of adoption of the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed, carried. All right, good. That completes the public hearing portion of our agenda this evening. Thanks, everybody, for being here with us. And we will now move on to the reports and recommendations portion of the agenda. And the first matter here is a potential agreement to approve with Tree Trust for a residential tree sale program. And Tom Swenson is with us this evening from city staff to talk about this matter.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. I just wanted to start off with a quick introduction tonight. The city forester Luther Overholt is here. And more importantly, Laura Perez is a brand new assistant city forester. So I just wanted her to welcome her to her first meeting here at the council chambers. So this item is the tree sale. The council has passed the climate action plan. One of the main focuses in the climate action plan is trees. The goal, one of the main goals is to increase the tree canopy from 36% currently to 43% by 2040. This will have lower air pollution, lower exposure to extreme heat, increased stormwater retention, and improve community well-being. There's, of course, other reasons to plant trees beyond the climate action plan. It can increase the home value, attracts birds, bees and pollinators, reduces home energy consumption. It's a gift to the future and it retains and improves the neighborhood tree character, which is very important in Edina. The next-gen trees program has been going well. We're up to about 700 trees planted in 2022 with another 300 to go in 2023. The goal there is 1,000 trees throughout the community. As you can see on the right side is a picture of Roslyn Park and where trees have been planted. We've been focusing a lot of attention on city-owned property, which is great. It's a great improvement to Roslyn Park. We really want to get more of these trees into the neighborhood and not just focus on city property so heavily. So the city staff is really interested in the city-supported tree sale because it could provide an increase to tree canopy in neighborhoods, not just parks. Larger trees will lead to improved survival. We've done some sales with small trees in the past. These are larger. And added tree species diversity to the tree canopy really throughout Edina. Our goal is to partner with Tree Trust. They are already doing tree sales in a bunch of the communities around us. They have a lot of experience with it. It's a nonprofit organization. For this first year, we want to sell 200 trees. They're 6 to 8 feet tall. The residents would pay $50 for the tree. There's other costs involved and those costs would cover Tree Trust to operate a website, order processing, communications, materials and mulch, and distribution, day management, and some education on how to properly plant a tree.
So could you give us a practical example of how it would work? You know, Carolyn planted those trees in the park and now she wants a couple at her house. What does she do?
So Tree Trust will set up a website. Residents, the first 200 trees that are available, residents will be able to go to their website, enter their information, select a tree. They would pay, the resident would pay $50. The city would pay the other $50 for the tree. And then there's some other costs involved for a grand total out of the city's pocket of $15,000, but the residents' total over the 200 trees would be $10,000. So we're asking to, you know, co-pay basically, co-share the costs on the trees.
So how does she get the tree, a 6 to 8-foot tree to her house?
So the delivery would be set up likely at Fred Richards. We'll have, Tree Trust will have people there to help out. I can refer to Luther, I guess, for more details on how we're gonna manage him in the vehicle. But a six-feet, 6-foot tree is the size of me, so it's a containerized tree. Am I missing anything here, Luther?
Just like a hockey stick, you put it between the seats, you open the window, it sticks out the end.
Yeah, no problem.
Obviously, we're not gonna sell 20-foot trees. We're trying to make it manageable, but we wanted to increase the size quite a bit because in the past, they just don't survive if they're too small. But the residents would come to the site and pick them up.
It just strikes me that it would be really a great piece of the program if we had Tree Trust provide delivery or somebody provide delivery to the household after they paid for the tree and maybe even assisted in, you know, installation of it in the proper way.
So this is our first run at this program with Tree Trust. We're looking for feedback in the future, but at this point, we're just, our goal is to set this up and try with 200 trees and see what kind of feedback we get.
That would be an option, it's an extra cost though.
Come on up to the microphone, Luther. Yeah, well, maybe there's, you can give people that option.
No, so I've been speaking with Tree Trust about how they do this with other cities and that did come up. You know, some people, they don't want to go pick up a tree. They would, you know, they'd like to get the tree at the discounted rate and then, you know, they'd have an associated cost for Tree Trust to come and plant the tree on their property. And so that would be an option, but you know, like Tom was saying, for this year, we're just trying to get this kind of started and, you know, get kind of momentum behind this and, you know, trying to get trees on private property. And so this was kind of just, you know, the kind of the basic, you know, tree sale, but there are definitely options where we would be able to provide that service at an additional cost for residents.
Okay, thank you. Other questions from council members? Yes, Councilmember Jackson.
We're at the, are you done with your presentation?
I am.
Okay, thank you. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. When we planted them in Roslyn Park, Tree Trust showed us how to do it and they did a great job teaching us how to plant trees. When I go to pick up my tree, and I am going to, I'll be your first order, will they show me and other residents how to plant those trees? Because it's not always intuitive how to do it.
There will be communication on that. I don't know if it's a handout or through the website.
There'll be, we'll have a pamphlet that shows you, you know, exactly, kind of step-by-step how to do it. I already have a video on the city's YouTube page that shows you how to plant a tree. And then when you go to register, there will also be a link on there too. So even before you get your tree, you can go and watch and they have, you know, kind of how-to videos on how to do that. So we'll have both, you know, a handout, a pamphlet, and like a video that kind of shows you exactly how to do it so that you're, you know, putting at the correct depth and making sure your tree will survive.
Terrific, thank you. That's all.
Other questions? Okay, all right. Thanks, Mrs. Swenson.
Thank you.
So the motion is, let's see, motion to approve the agreement with Tree Trust for a residential tree sale program in the city of Edina. Is there a motion of that effect?
So moved.
Second. Member Jackson moves, Member Pierce seconds. Motion to approve the agreement with Tree Trust for a residential tree sale program in the city of Edina. Any further discussion? Those in favor of adoption of the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed, carried? All right, thank you, Mrs. Swenson. And now we'll move back to Director Teague, who's got a, the next matter, 202303, multifamily housing in the city's commercial zoning districts.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This item, the council held a public hearing at your last meeting. Just a quick summary of the ordinance. So this ordinance would bring our zoning code up to, into compliance with the affordable housing policy that was approved by the HRA this past December. The planning commission is recommending the ordinance unanimously. There are two notable changes. The buy-in fee is increased to $175,000. And secondly, we're adding some emphasis about providing affordable housing units within a project. Ultimately, it's the final decision is, rests with the city council, but we're encouraging for mixed-use projects that are 50% and over the density, the maximum allowed density in the comprehensive plan to provide the units within the project. And for an all-residential development, that is, 75% or over the density allowed for the site, that those also be included within that project. So with that, staff is recommending approval and if the council is comfortable with the language and ordinance as written, we would recommend that you waive second reading. And Manager Hawkinson is also here with us, who has authored the changes.
Thank you, Director Teague. Questions for Director Teague or Manager Hawkinson? I have, you know, I was not at the HRA meeting when this matter was discussed and I've got a concern, I like the, so many elements of the proposed ordinance, but the thing that gives me a little bit of pause and a little bit of anxiety is the change from $125,000 to $175,000 per unit. We get the same multiplier, of course, 10% of the total unit responsibility for affordable. But, you know, we know that construction costs are up over 30% and some projects aren't going forward because of it. And it just seems to me that it's not a very good time to be changing our rule on going from $125,000 to $175,000 per door. It's, you know, the, I'm thinking about the amount of money that we've raised through this buy-in program that's helped with projects like Aon and Omenson Flats, if memory serves me correctly. And I wouldn't want to see it dry up. And especially in this environment where inflation is running fairly strong, interest rates are up over 6%, you know, maybe close to 7%. Construction costs up 30-plus percent. And we decide that we're gonna raise the cost per door to, for the buy-in program by, from $125,000 to $175,000, by $50,000 a door. And it's just, it's just made me anxious about causing more harm than good. And it's just something I'm personally worried about. I know that nobody else seems to be worried about it. The planning commission voted unanimously to approve this. It reminded me a little bit of where I grew up in North Dakota, where the state legislature was always figuring out a way to make money off the oil industry. And then, you know, they'd go through these cycles where the price would drop from $100 a barrel to $30 a barrel. All of a sudden, everything dried up. And I don't want that to happen here. I don't want, I don't want to, I don't want to be an impediment to having housing opportunities continue to embrace us. But I also don't know what the, what's the straw that breaks the camel's back? I don't, I don't know what, where that point is, but I still worry about it. And so right now, in this economy, in this, in this environment, I just, I don't feel comfortable raising that amount to $175,000 per door. And maybe other folks can convince me otherwise and I'm sure willing to listen, but that's, that's my fear is that we somehow disturb the program that's been so effective for us in helping deliver affordable housing by raising the cost per door by $50,000 per Member Agden?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The way that I think about this is I think about what's our overarching goal. And for me, that is the expectations that we have as a city of having additional units of affordable housing. And so when we take a step back and we think about, you know, what is, what is the impact of having $125,000 as the current buy-in amount compared to 175? In some ways, by raising it, I think one of the intents is that affordable unit is included in the development upfront. So we're creating a little bit of a higher barrier so that potentially fewer people will do the buy-in. But what that means is now we have that many more units of affordable housing that are entering into the market here in Edina. And so to me, that's something that's positive, especially when you consider, you know, some of the other... especially when you consider, you know, some of the other programs that this money does go to use to support homes within reach, something that we've learned a lot about over the last couple of weeks, right? The, the cost for one of those units for the city, I think, you know, if I recall the numbers right, pretend we invest 100, or 500,000 into the house, 200,000 of it goes into the land trust, that's still a $300,000 gap then that we're paying for one additional unit. So that means that 175,000 that is being paid into this fund to avoid adding one unit doesn't cover one unit of housing if we were to apply these funds in another way. And so when I think about just kind of the basic economics of, we want to encourage more units of affordable housing, I feel like this is one of those tangible ways in which, when you just look at like the overall cost, it's the right way to do it, which is why, you know, support increasing it as well as requiring it for those higher density developments. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Yes, Member Jackson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So one of the things that I was thinking is, is there a way to sort of measure the impact of doing this? So that, you know, we give it a time period. Within that time period, has it negatively affected our ability to have units built at all? And then how would we, you know, set that goal now and measure it in the future? That that might, we should probably have some feedback because this is a fairly experimental program to have the buy-in at all. And it'd be great if we had a way of measuring what the change in, in the dollar amount, the effect on the housing market. Is there a way to do that?
We can certainly do that as developers come in and, you know, and we're letting them know what the amount is, you know, ask them, you know, how much is this impacting? So we could collect some data just with our, our meetings with developer, developers as time goes on. And I believe the intent is every year, maybe two years, that we're going to take a look at the policy and revisit it. And certainly, that number would be one that, that we would want to look at.
Okay, I would, if we do vote for this tonight and approve it, I'd really like to get that metric set up so that we can have that data when we review it again. I think that'd be really helpful.
You know, if, Member Pierce. Well, Member Rissler.
I would also just like to add on to what Member Agnew said, and note that the costs are also going up in the programs that these funds support. And so having additional funds is useful for that reason. And my understanding is that at our, at the current rate, we're not seeing the outcome that we want. And essentially, that is what Commissioner, or excuse me, Member Agnew said. As to Member Jackson's point, I think it is really good to collect data. But what is the saying, causation versus correlation? And to your point, Mr. Mayor, there's a lot going on right now. And so it's hard to, I think it would be hard to discern from the data that Director Teague collects whether or not this increment would be the factor that comes into play as, you know, if we see a decline in the number of projects moving forward, you know, I don't, I'd be reticent to interpret it that way.
Yeah, thank you. Member Pierce?
So this, this one is complicated for me because I would, when we were doing race in equity back in, I think it was 2018, we had this debate on the buy-in. And we kind of thought of it as kind of a, it was a cop-out, is the way we were talking about it then, that developers don't want to do affordable housing, so they buy out, they do the buy-in, and it's kind of a cop-out. That was the way we thought about it. And then, the more I dug into it, the less I felt that way. And, you know, I eventually got to the point where I went from one extreme to the other. I would almost rather the developer not provide affordable housing if they do the buy-in. And we have a methodology to where we can now take those funds, leverage those in the community to get the type of affordable housing we need versus, you know, having to have a developer add, you know, a percentage of rentals. And so I went from one extreme to the other. Now, the construct that I am alluding to does not exist today, so we, we don't have a way to do that. But from a future standpoint, like, that's the way I think about it. I would rather, at this point, developers do the buy-in so that we can pool those funds. And then, as city, we can go invest in the affordable housing that we need. And so the one slide I was trying to find, which I did find in the presentation, and I, hopefully I'm saying this right, the conversation was that because the current rate is the 125, it is more cost-effective for the developer to buy in rather than to include affordable units. And so this is not to contradict where I started. This is, the current paradigm is that at 125, if we want developers to include affordable units, it's more cost-effective for them to do the buy-in rather than to add the units. And so if what we're trying to do, because we really don't have a construct where we could take those dollars, leverage those, and invest those for affordable housing in the way that I started talking about, then having a higher proposed rate, then it's trying to abate that issue. So now if it's 175, maybe it now causes a conversation, it's a different balance of now it is more cost-effective to provide those units as opposed to doing the buy-in. So I think what we're trying to do is strike the balance of saying, what's the right amount to actually drive the action that we want? And then the analysis that was done, the proposed 175 is, is the way that was, we felt that would be the right incentive to drive a better outcome in the current paradigm. And so that's how I, I got comfortable with it. I, and then I'll respond to Member Jackson's suggestion. I'm always for measuring, right, understanding the data. And maybe I would say it that way. Understanding the data to ensure that we're getting the outcome that we thought. And then if we're not reaching that outcome, then we should continue to look at it and adjust as we go. And so that's the way I, I think about it. And I think we do that today, which is why this came before us. We're not getting the outcome we want. We've done an analysis. We've looked at the data. And here's a suggestion on driving a different outcome. And so I'd always be, I'd always support continuing to look at the data to ensure that we're getting the kind of outcome that we want.
Yeah, thanks. You know, I think back in time when we started this affordable housing policy, and there were three ways that you could meet your affordable housing responsibilities. Do it in the building, your building, do it somewhere else, or do the buy-in. And the buy-in started at 100,000, then we went to 125,000. Now the suggestion is we go to 175,000. We're also requiring the inclusion of affordable units, requiring the inclusion of affordable units if the developer is seeking density in the top half of the density range. So we got them going in a good direction that way. The thing that just worries me is that somehow that, you know, if, let's say there's 20, you got a, you got a 20-unit responsibility for affordable housing, times $50,000, it's a million dollars of responsibility that's added on to your development cost. I don't know if that's a deal breaker or not. But right now, I just don't feel like finding out. Because I know what works. I know what's been working. And, and though the costs are going up, and it might be 325,000 a door to build in a multifamily building, we, you know, we can't run off that model, I don't think, because it's always going to be, there's always going to be that gap. We're never going to be able to say, okay, you got to pay us 375 a door if that's the cost to get out of your affordable housing obligations. We could, if we wanted to kill development in Edina, in my opinion. But, so I don't, I don't know. I don't know. I sit here, I think, for all of it except that. But, Member Pierce?
Just to respond, so the scenario that you just walked through is what they're trying to address. And so the developer says, it's going to cost a million to do those. That is too high of a cost for me to do the buy-in, so I'm going to provide.
Put them in the units.
Right, I'm going to do the units because it's cheaper.
Could be.
To do that. And from a market rate, from a market rate perspective, after 20 years, I can recoup that cost. So that was kind of a scenario of the way that we were, it was described, that we were thinking about.
It could do that, or it could cause them to say, I'm going somewhere else.
That's true.
You know, I'm just not going to do it in Edina. What we do know so far is that this experiment that we've been running has been really novel. And people all over the region have been looking at it and wondering how we've been so successful. The reason, I think, at least in significant part, we've been successful is because we've had this buy-in program where people thought initially it was a bad idea, even whether it was the commission that you were helping lead, or others were saying, you know, well, look at what's happened around the country. They take this money on the buy-in and they put it in the general fund. Well, no, we didn't do that. We firewallled it off, and we used it for affordable housing, and we got millions of dollars out of it. Things we would never been able to do. We were able to do because of that buy-in. And I just don't want to see the, I don't want to see that stop. And there might be a time where I'm more comfortable going to 175. But just because construction costs are up for everybody, and they're up by 30%, it doesn't seem to me that it makes sense that we add to the burden by saying, now you're going to pay 175,000 bucks a door instead of 125. So.
Yes.
I don't know, maybe, maybe Manager Hawkinson may have some insights here, too, that helped me because it's really, it's a tough issue for me.
Yeah. So, if I may. So as we're talking about this, one of the things that occurs to me is that if the buy-in is the option, it could be 100% market rate and just be built and immediately go to our tax base. And, and so that we get the benefit right away into our tax base. If the housing is included, it's highly likely that they'll, they would come back and ask for TIF funding. And then the tax increment goes into paying the TIF instead of immediately into the pockets of the local governments for immediate use. So one of the impacts may be if we push more for the inclusionary housing, which has a lot of benefits, but it also may increase the use of TIF. And so we want to think about, is that going to have a tax impact? You know, maybe we're okay with that. But that's, that's one more wrinkle that occurs to me as we're discussing this.
Yeah. And this, this notion of a mix of housing where you've got a lot of affordable units in a, in a, let's say, a market rate project, I think that's smart. And that's, that's, that's a great goal. And that's the way it ought to work. But then, we have other circumstances, like we get an opportunity to do something with Aon or one of the other affordable housing builders. We've had a chance to do that, too. So, right on this, does, I suppose it's got to be embedded in the ordinance to make it effective as opposed to just having a policy shift. And I don't, I don't want to, you know, say, okay, we're going to, we're going to go to 175, and then six months from now saying, gee, it doesn't look like this is working. We're not getting any money in the door. But there could be a variety of reasons for that, too. I mean, with construction costs up 30%, maybe nobody's going to be doing anything. We've seen some of that activity. Member Rissler?
To be honest, I'm more concerned about our design guidelines that require 20-foot ceiling height and 70% glass exterior on the first floor, if I'm getting that right. Because I think that could, I mean, if we're talking about what might be blocking development, but we're getting off track here, and I don't want it, but that could be, you know, a conversation later.
Sure. Okay.
If I may, when the Planning Commission looked at it, they asked what the city council policy was on affordable housing. And we've had kind of a lengthy discussion, but I just wanted to kind of answer that question. Because they're like, well, I think there's been some discomfort, maybe Member Agnew can address this, but with the idea of the buy-in as being part of our affordable housing policy. And so I just want to share a few of my ideas or my feelings about what we're doing overall with affordable housing. And I found a article posted by the head of Fannie Mae last fall. And the title of it was "U.S. Housing Shortage: Everything Everywhere All at Once." And I think that kind of sums up where we're at as a nation. It's a nationwide problem that there's a housing supply crisis. And what the Fannie Mae director said is, it really is a national problem that needs local solutions. And that goes to your comment, Mr. Mayor, that we've got something really unique here. And he concludes by saying, the only way out of the supply crisis is to create more housing and preserve the affordable housing we already have. In the housing chapter of the comprehensive plan, the number-one issue facing our city in trends and challenges was affordability across a range of household types. And I did prepare a matrix of the different types of affordable housing. And rather than go through that, there's naturally occurring inclusionary housing and 100% affordable housing. It's rental, multifamily unit, rental, or ownership multifamily, and then single and low-density ownership or housing. And so that's nine types. We really don't have inclusionary on, on low-density housing. It doesn't really make sense. But so there are eight different types of affordable housing. The one thing I really do like about this buy-in is that only 100% affordable housing and inclusionary, both of those as rental, are available for TIF financing. So this gives us, as you were mentioning with the Aon project, with the Amundson flats, gives us flexibility to have ownership opportunities, to have 100% affordable opportunities. It really gives us the flexibility to do that, everything everywhere all at once. And I just wanted to answer the question of the Planning Commission by doing that. So, thank you.
Yeah, thanks. You know, with this obligation that we think we've got in this metropolitan area to produce 18,000 housing units a year over the next 10 years, we talked about it rotary this morning again. I'm, I'm very conscious about us doing our fair share of this. And what I, what I worry about is that sort of on a broad basis, that we, we stunt what we've been doing as opposed to enhancing it. And I don't know the answer, but maybe one answer is, in the environment we're in, if, if we could look at this in a year instead of waiting two years, and then look at how it's working, that might create some level of comfort for me. I mean, this is up to the council, right? I mean, it's not, it's not staff coming to us and saying, oh, the year is up, time for you to look at the, I mean, Stephanie is, yeah, well, she may, she may be doing that, but.
When we first adopted this, this aspect of our policy, we, we just promised ourselves that every once in a while, we would go back to it and review it to make sure the numbers were still relevant. So that's part of what we're doing.
Okay. All right.
Would you feel more comfortable increasing it by 30%, like the construction costs as opposed to the $50,000?
Say, you got me to the point where we'll just go for it.
Okay.
Look at it a year.
All right, good. All right.
Okay. Is there a motion to waive second reading and adopt ordinance 2023-03 as written and review this policy within, at the one-year mark?
Still moved.
Review this ordinance at the one-year mark.
Still moved. Second.
Member Agnew moves. Member Jackson seconds. The motion is stated. Any further discussion? Thank you, colleagues. All those in favor of adoption of the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Carried? Manager Neal, you have the next matter.
Thank you, Your Honor. We are, we are going to the board and commission appointments?
Correct.
All right. Very good. As you'll recall, because you all participated in this discussion, we had 43, I believe, applicants for 22 open positions on our, on our various advisory boards and commissions. Council members were all. Council members were all part of the interview team process, along with two of our board and commission chairs, Mary Absalom and, and.
Annie Schilling.
Annie Schilling from the HPC and Mary from the CHC. We had the opportunity then to come together and discuss our preferred candidates and then make some decisions about placement. And so tonight's slate of, of commission appointments is the slate that you agreed to that evening. And we, as, as staff, prepared this and including a number of alternates, and we ask for the council to approve it. If you do, these folks are, they already know that they're being considered tonight. We then start a process with them to orient and educate them about not only their particular board or commission, but also their role in city government as well. So we recommend their appointment by the council tonight.
All right. Question for Manager Neal? We all participated in this process. Is there a motion to appoint the new board and commission members as proposed?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Member Jackson, second by Member Pierce to adopt the 2023 Edina Advisory Board and Commission appointments as recommended? Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Carried. And then the last matter on the action portion of the agenda tonight is potential approval of the 2023 agreement between the City of Edina and our school district 273 regarding the general school district election to be held this year. And Manager Neal has this matter as well.
Thank you, Your Honor. You may recall that you have seen this general agreement before. This, this agreement accompanied the action last year when, when we voted to cancel the previous agreement between the city and the school district, an agreement that had been in place since the late 1980s in terms of the city operating the, the school district, Edina School District operations, excuse me, election operations. We had a number of opportunities to discuss an agreement with the school district. We wanted to provide a longer kind of runway for them to assume greater control over their own elections. So we drafted this particular agreement. This agreement essentially, with one exception, keeps in place all the kind of operating practices and expectations of previous, of previous year's elections. This gives us the opportunity to kind of meet with our, our individual peers at the school district and talk about how elections could be run in the future, whether we have, how our different roles would play out. So we asked the, the district to adopt this action. They did at their February 13 meeting. The only thing that is different in a material sense from previous election agreements is they asked for a cap on, on our costs that we would seek reimbursement for of $150,000. We've not had a cap before. After some discussion in-house, we do feel that cap would, we would, would be likely to cover all of our anticipated costs for their elections this year. We will be tracking those costs, and we'll know if we are over or under. And we do recommend, staff does recommend, that the council approve this agreement.
Questions for Manager Neal? I thought this turned out to be an effective way, first step, to take care of '23, and then Councilmember Jackson and you and I are working with the school district team to see what we do beyond 2023. And so I think this is a logical first step.
This is a status quo move. It keeps in place all the, as I said before, all the kind of general practices that we have before.
All right. Other questions? Is there a motion to approve the 2023 agreement between the City of Edina and the independent school district, number 273, regarding the general school district election to be held this year?
So moved. Second?
Member Jackson moves. Member Agnew seconds. The motion is stated. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Carried. All right. We've had correspondence provided to us, and I'm going to turn now to Manager Neal's comments, and then we'll go to council comments.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just have a couple tonight. We are about to be buried by snow. And we are, have been, we've had the foresight to be able to prepare for that snow from, from the perspective of the public works department that spends a great deal of time and effort and pride in moving snow off of our streets and sidewalks and trails. The biggest thing that we ask for from residents, and I think all of our coworkers here, and of course, the council's patience, this will be, we've been told to expect a heavy snow, which is harder to move than a light fluffy snow. There are a lot of public works folks that are out there in, in great equipment that are moving the snow just as safely and fastly as they can, and fast as they can. So we do appreciate folks' patience as they do their work. The other thing that we will tell you about is that we were expecting a number of closures and cancellations associated with the snow. For example, we have already canceled tomorrow night's planning commission meeting. But we will be displaying prominently on our website cancellations and scheduled changes associated with, with the snow. Maybe we won't have to have as many as we think. Maybe we'll have more than we think. But that's where we will go to put those out to the public. Finally, we have an event that I think all of us were planning to go to on Friday at the Municipal Legislative Commission Legislative Breakfast at Bremer Clubhouse. And as of right now, that still is scheduled to go on. So we are going to make sure that we have all of our roads and parking lots cleaned for guests to come into the community. And there's also a possibility that it could be canceled, but right now, it's still on for Friday morning. That's all I've got. Thank you.
We did talk about postponing it a week, but apparently Bremer isn't available on the 3rd, so it's, it's, it's a tough choice.
Yeah.
We'll see what happens. But we know that our parking lot will be clear and our streets will be clear.
We do know that.
And it's just a matter of getting people here in the regional system. So, all right, good. Member Rissler?
Just want to mention that I will be attending training two days offered by the League of Minnesota Cities, so looking forward to that. And I will also be attending the city day at the Capitol with the league. So I'll be getting more up to speed on the duties of serving the council.
Member Jackson.
I just wanted to thank everybody who applied for the boards and commissions. It was a pleasure to meet everybody who I hadn't met before and a pleasure to see the people who I'd met before. And I'm just always amazed by the riches of volunteers in our city. So thank you all.
Thank you. Member Pierce.
Nothing from me tonight.
Okay. Member Agnew.
None from me tonight. Thank you.
All right. Just have a couple things. A reminder, I don't know if this will come off or not, the annual chamber event is scheduled for Thursday night at the Weston called appropriately Cabin Fever. So I don't know if that means if you can get there or you can't leave, if it's a Hotel California deal or not. But, so that's, as far as I know, it's still on. So that's just a reminder of that. We talked about the MLC breakfast on Friday, still on. We had a TAB meeting last week, had a climate mayor's meeting today, and they were interested in some of the things that we were doing. And San Antonio, the mayor of San Antonio was going to send a PDF on this, but they've been using a door hanger technique to tell consumers directly what the benefits are in the Inflation Reduction Act for those sort of direct-to-consumer opportunities, you know, like heat pumps and, and solar panels and things that Grace has been working on with some postcard strategies. So I'll, I'll get that material and we'll take a look at it with staff and see if that makes sense for our community. And then some of the other communities had some good ideas, too. And then I went over to Creekside. Bill Nundorf put together a really nice presentation of what's been going on in the city and Creekside condominiums and just a bunch of great people over there that were full of questions. And it was a nice way to spend an hour and a half or so. And then I was down last week, too, at the Federal Reserve for breakfast with Eileen Shermoff, talking about some of these housing issues that we talked about tonight. And then the other thing I noticed in looking at some of my email, and this was a while ago now, but one of our residents was musing online about whether or not, when I was at the U.S. Conference of Mayors Midwinter Meeting, I had actually been in attendance when Secretary Buttigieg gave Edina a shout-out for zero traffic deaths. And I wanted to assure this resident that indeed I was there, and I had met with him an hour and a half before that with just four mayors, and had told me the same thing face-to-face. And, but I was pleased to be in that room and get a lot of shout-outs from mayors around the room about that, that recognition by the secretary. So I wasn't off doing something else. I was right there. And that's it for me. Thank you. Anybody else have anything that they thought of? All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We've got a motion by Member Jackson, second by Member Pierce to adjourn the meeting of the city council this 21st day of February 2023 at 9:04 PM. Any further discussion? Those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Stand adjourned.